Everybody, please remember to put on your microphones. Please call.
Hubbard.
Here.
Schloss.
Here.
Sima Pharoah.
Here.
Aldag. Um, Tell.
Yeah.
Popoff.
Here.
Heo.
Awesome, awesome.
Okay. Martinez.
Yeah.
Petrinco.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, first item or item C is approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, also part.
Motion by Schloss, support by Tell. Do any comments, updates, corrections? Seeing none, please call and vote.
Okay, Hubbard.
Yes.
Schloss.
Yes.
Popoff.
Yes.
Sima Pharoah.
Yes.
Tell.
Yes.
We have no prearranged participation. Item E on the agenda is non-arranged participation. There's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the council? Uh, please come forward, give us your name and your address. And please note that you're limited to five minutes per participant for your speaking. Thank you. No, this is just not arranged. Okay. Anybody else? Is there anyone online, Josh? No comments. Okay. All right. Uh, declarations of conflict of interest. Any council members with a conflict for tonight? Hearing none. Next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Tell, second by Popoff. Is there any comments, changes, updates to the agenda? Okay, please call the vote.
Schloss.
Yes.
Popoff.
Yes.
Tell.
Yes.
Sima Pharoah.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
All right. On to page two, item H, public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is for the City of Dexter Downtown Development Authority amended development tax and increment financing plan. Open the hearings.
Yeah, you can open the hearing then, uh, if you want, Michelle can.
Okay, so let's open the heart hearing at seven oh three. Go ahead, Michelle, anytime you're ready. No, no, fine, whatever you can.
Oh, you know, so this is something that the DDA has been working on for a couple of years. It was an involved project because they were updating not just the strategic plan, but within that strategic plan, which was back from two thousand six, it also included the development plan and TIF plan. And part of the project required the separation of those two documents, and there's a good reason for it. The development plan and the TIF plan have statutory requirements. So the state requires that as part of the DDA's, um, uh, the DDA and legal legislation, which is the recodified Tax Increment Finance Act, Act fifty-seven of twenty eighteen, as amended. Strategic plan is a plan for the DDA and the community. It's not required by statute, but it helps. It's very focused. It identifies projects. It, it ranks and prioritizes those, um, items in which the DDA is going to spend its money. Where there's the development and TIF plan is a broader overview. It projects potential revenue out over the course of thirty years based on redevelopment or reinvestment, depending on your, uh, the way you want to look at this, in the district. Today with me is Elena, um, from the CIB Planning. A CIB Planning was the company that the DDA selected to do this update. If you've got any questions, she's happy to talk with you as well. Um, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them over what I've just said.
Any questions?
Oh, definitely, and Jack, real quick, um, there was a, an item in the supplemental report, um, that is a presentation on the, uh, overall, uh, DDA strategic planning process. Um, there will be a, a separate item on a future agenda, uh, for the strategic plan in whole. Um, and the public hearing tonight is just for the, uh, TIF and development.
And you might remember, you did see this about a year ago, almost a year ago, actually. And one of the things that you had decided that you didn't want to adopt it at that time, you held the public hearing, everything, but you didn't want to adopt it at that time, waiting to see how the strategic plan came out. And it's kudos to you for doing that because there were two minor little updates that were made to this, to the development plan. That was the adding of the public restrooms under public infrastructure projects and DDA staff support, public services and facilities specific to the DDA, such as police and fire under the consultation and operational expenses. So I'm a firm believer, I, I take that at very, um, strictly in my interpretation, and if the DDA is going to spend money, the DDA needs to make sure it's in this development. Even if the language is general and not specific dates or amounts, things like that, but you gotta identify them here. So, um, if there are any other questions, please talk to me, I'm happy to answer.
Uh, Councilmember Tell.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand the, um, uh, levels here. So would you consider the strategic plan like a master plan or something similar to that?
It, it similarly, but, um.
I mean, it doesn't really, it provides direction.
Think about it this way. Remember how we, within this latest master plan update, we have the part about Second Street? And it's, it's strategic on how we're gonna.
Right.
Forward with it. That's kind of, that's kind of what this DDA strategic plan is. Looks at the entire district, establishes the same goals and objectives or extrapolates them out, uh, from the development plan and TIF plan, but then starts to, right, to identify specific projects the DDA wants to take on and prioritizes those. And so think of the strategic plan in five-year intervals, similar to the master plan. It's very easy to update a strategic plan.
Right.
You don't have to go through public hearing processes, reviews by outside communities, et cetera. So it's fairly easy to update it. Um, but it does function very similarly to the, to the master plan and your gas.
There's any certain requirements to update the strategic, strategic plan, other than just, uh, everyone says that's a good idea?
Yeah.
And.
After you've, so as the DDA ticks off the priorities that they've listed in their strategic plan, that's when you would go ahead and update it. And it wouldn't necessarily, it won't necessarily require an update to the development.
Correct. By separating it.
Yeah.
And we had an issue with that because all three of them were intertwined previously?
The development plan, TIF plan, which is one that.
Right.
Was in the strategic plan and, um, because of that.
It's hard to adjust a strategic plan. Well, maybe we can use a slight modification, I don't know. All right, I just wanna get a handle on a strategic plan, see what was being done differently, and there's nothing I don't disagree with there, I mean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Popoff.
Um, I have just few, just little questions. Um, excellent thing, right, it was, uh, obviously a lot of work. Um, what are your, um, like checkpoints? Thirty years is a long term.
Thirty years to think of the strategic plan in five-year, five to ten-year intervals.
So you're setting checkpoints for five-year intervals, right, to reassess the size of the district and see if the capture is upcasing the need or vice versa?
We won't be looking at the size of the district because we won't expand or grant the boundaries for the TIS captured area. But we will look at if there are updates. Let's, let, I'll do a worst case scenario. Let's say we have another recession and the values within the properties within the district. It's those projections that are currently in the development plan, plan, aren't going to be the same. It may rebound quickly, like we did coming out of two thousand eight, or it may rebound slowly, and it will be a combination of city and DDA determining do we need to then amend the DDA plan to accurately reflect this change? Or do we just write it out and we will rebook it our strategic plan to see what we want to do or can do within this new five-year old thing?
So five years. May I ask a follow-on question?
Yep.
Um, so the operation part, excellent addition, right? In your opinion, do you have a recommendation to setting a percent limit of the funding that can be dedicated to that? Um, from just the staff's perspective? And then, um, how do you see the reporting metric, uh, for the council? Just to see how that operational cost is changing from year to year, um, from the, in the DDA?
So. When the DDA deals with budget, like it did this year, the request from, and I'm going through the mayor, was to consider, um, helping out with a number of different things. One was fire station, one was police and fire services, um, the Main Street resurfacing and public restrooms in the eighty fifty building. The DDA took all of those into consideration and looked at their forecast and knew what their budget revenue would be coming in, and they subjectively chose how much they could, um, allocate, if you will, for contributions or things to the city, police and fire, eighty fifty main, et cetera. And what things they would put money to where they dealt with their own projects. And a classic example of that one is Main Street's being resurfaced next year. One of their, one of the DDA's priorities was to upgrade that, I mean, pedestrian crossing. Well, that's being done as part of the Main Street update, but what it allows the DDA to do is save their fund and, um, put them toward the, um, it's a.
R R F B.
Our, the rapid flashing begin to make that area safer. And they make the things, they made that decision for that family. So we're already way getting forward.
I guess, uh, more, so thanks for the explanation. It's just for, it'd be really nice for the council over the years to get, um, just kind of a number of percent point. Okay, so within the last year, within the last, I was ten percent, fifteen percent, whatever the number was. So that whenever you're making the budget for, uh, following years, you have some sort of educated estimate of what the expected percentage breakdown is going to be from the, that's, I guess, is more proper question.
And do that. And, and, and just to kind of build on that, um, dur- during our budget process too, we also look at, um, the, um, percent of staff time spent on DDA administration. And so we look at things like Michelle's time, my time, um, now going to be Orna's time, um, and break that down and distribute it appropriately to the different funds, including DDA.
Nice to have those metrics.
I'll set.
Yes.
You said. Um, any other comments, questions? Two reps? Nope, okay. Um, are there any questions or comments from the audience, please? Doesn't look like there's anybody online either.
Oh, I forgot to mention.
Go ahead.
And he is, um, President of C I B, he couldn't be here in person, so he's online in case you have any questions for him.
Got it, understand. Thank you for attending.
It's like he's not wearing a lion's jersey.
Okay.
Yeah, turn it on.
There's no other comments. We'll close the public hearing at seven fifteen. Uh, and so on the agenda, we have consideration of the City of Dexter Downtown Development Authority amended development tax increment financing TIF plan. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, why would second it?
All right, we have a motion by Schloss, supported or seconded by Popoff. Just quickly, Michelle, is there anything on the, on the, uh, so it's number one in the packet on page fourteen, there, there's a number of findings that are on there. I assume those just go to the whereas and whatnots and stuff.
They're all big deal.
Yeah, okay. It, is there anything else, um, any other conditions that were considered or possibly needed?
The lines are there in case there's something that council.
Okay. Right. Any comments, updates, changes?
I think with the strategic planning in there, it's a little bit more leeway.
Right, right, yeah, this is, and correctly if I'm wrong, you said the strategic plan will be a separate.
Correct.
Presentation of vote, yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Trying the wrong answer.
No, no, there's, well, there's actually the, the part two one, yeah, that threw me at first also, but that's good. Okay. There's no other comments? Please call the vote.
Schloss.
Yes.
Sima Pharoah.
Yes.
Popoff.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Tell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero. Uh, second. The second public hearing tonight is a request for industrial facilities tax exemption submitted by twenty-three twenty-six Bishop Circle East LLC. Uh, we will open the public hearing at seven seventeen.
And we can do the same thing, have.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Elstead, um, Director of Business Development for Ann Arbor Spark, for the Economic Development Organization for Washington County, and we work closely, um, with Michelle, um, at lots of events to promote business expansion and retention in Dexter. And I'm here to, um, support the I F T for Apogee. I met the company a couple of years ago. It's a family-owned business, um, C N C machine. Um, and I know that they were looking for a new facility and they found one in, um, Dexter and had to make some repairs. And Michelle, as part of her economic development duties, had recommended that they apply, um, for an I F T. So I'm here to, um, show my support for this project. It strengthens the local manufacturing, um, base and reflects the small businesses that you want in your industrial park. So, um, we appreciate the support that you give companies and we are working with you, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle, was there anything that you wanted to comment on?
No, everything is in the memo. If there's anything you'd like me to go over.
Okay, the, in the supplement, um, the city manager did include the, uh, the application, um, if you hadn't seen that, please see, um, it looks like it's, uh, twenty to twenty-nine, or I'm sorry, two years for the, for the exemption?
Using the, the valuation.
Yeah.
Form that the city has, it came out to the two year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yep. Councilmember Tell, um, is the landlord and the tenant same individuals with different names?
Basically.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right. Uh, then we'll close the. Yeah. Thank you.
If, 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 if there's additional investment, then.
Correct.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at seven twenty P M. So the item on the agenda is consideration of request for industrial facility tax, tax exemption submitted by twenty-three twenty-six Bishop Circle East LLC. Is there a motion?
Back and making.
I'll second it. It's happening here.
So only a joke.
Two people are gone, we're just like lost.
And I'm like half awake, so.
Oh, then you should be a supervisor.
I know, right?
Motion. Motion by Tell, support by Hubbard. Um, other comments or questions at all? Discussion? Anything else that we need to know or should be aware of, Justin?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Now, you are going to have more, they're bringing thirteen jobs. They're proposing within the next two years, create five to seven. They'll sign an agreement towards that. We'll check them in two years and based on what I hear, they're going to be helpful through that, so.
Good.
Yeah, that's an empty building just sitting there. That's that old flower building, isn't it?
Yeah, the, the old growers.
Right, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a stanchion upgrade.
Yeah, that's great. Good to know.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no other comments or questions? Please call the vote.
Sima Pharoah.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Popoff.
Yes.
Tell.
Yeah.
Schloss.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. All right. Uh, next is communications. There is the meeting calendar in the packet on page thirty-seven. Any comments or updates? Seeing none, move on to reports. Uh, first up on reports, J one is Public Services Superintendent Tim Stewart.
Hi, how's everybody doing tonight?
Good, Tim, thank you.
Okay, make sure everybody can. Um, okay, so I got the three-week report in front of you guys. If you guys need, I can answer any questions.
Anyone have any? Councilmember Schloss.
Are you on vacation, Tim?
Jeez.
I am not, no, I'm sorry, no, Dan, I was the last time, no.
I drove by, drove by the fire department. I seen a couple of our DPW guys standing around a wet hole, and I was wondering if, uh, you had any, any idea what was going on by the new fire station?
So while they're doing grade, they hit a line that, um, nobody seems to know what it is. It's, it's a sprinkler irrigation line. Um, but I, I talked to Todd, Todd was unaware that that was there, so it was, I actually got ahold of Kurt, and Kurt didn't know anything about it either, so, but we were able to turn it off, um, in front of the Huntington at that shut-off, so. So we're thinking that, uh, we've got a little investigation, do they fixed it? But, um, they just gotta figure out what it goes to and where.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No problem.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Stewart?
How long do we do the leaf pickup? I notice we're just really starting to fall.
We go through, I think, uh, just, Justin, what is it, the second week of November?
Uh, no, so we, uh, will do, uh, leaf collection through, uh, December, and then it switches over to bag leaf collection. Um, the, the, the full schedule is in the la- latest newsletter. Um, it, it started last week, and then they'll, they'll, they'll be doing it every week through.
I just, I know my trees haven't fallen yet, and when they do, it's, it's gonna be mad.
Always.
Oh, it is, it's gonna be like, no. All right, as long as you're ready.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tim. Uh, second report.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Is Community Development Manager? Good evening, this is.
Yeah, there you go.
Act three.
It's been a while since that's happened, so.
What's that?
Then Michelle show.
Oh, kind of. Sometimes it's remote, so.
Okay, I, um, answer any questions for you tonight?
Any questions or comments? Looks like you're gonna get hurt easy tonight.
One last update?
Yep.
Probably by the end of this month, beginning of November, the new Mighty Coffee will be opening up at, um, um, the pumpkin next, in, within that space, um, because they'll be coming in for their final zoning compliance. When I get back from vacations, when I'll do their inspections.
In, in the industrial park?
In the industrial.
Okay.
So they're doing a coffee roasting operation, which, that's the manufacturing part, and then they'll have a small retail.
Oh, nice. Wh- what about the, uh, coffee shop that's out on Dexter and Arbor Road? What's their timeline?
Um, they're moving as fast as they can, so you understand? So they'll probably be opening in the spring sometime.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Maybe even earlier, I'll say.
On the weather, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're moving, can you answer?
Yeah.
Um, do you have an update from Planning Commission on the food truck?
So food truck is going to them in November with a draft ordinance. We've gone through the whole process. They wanted to take it slow, and we did, took it in very small, digestible, bite-sized pieces of information. We got the feedback we needed from them, and the direction that they want is, um, better definition on special events.
Good.
And, um, to allow food trucks, but only as part of special events.
Okay.
So there may be some small tweaks to the general code so that the language dovetails or for consistency with this ordinance that I believe they will eventually send, uh, your way. But, um, it's not going to be a huge departure.
Yeah, so there's, they're still trying to define special event.
We, we have, we have a definition that we've agreed on or that they've provided feedback on. I can't tell you off the top of my head what it is, too many things floating around in me right now. But, um, you will, if you look at the last planning commissions, I mean, the memo that was in that packet, which would have been for the act oh, the September meeting, had a definition of special events. Like weekends.
Was there, I'm sorry, is there a, 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 a timeline for defining special events, the one day, seven days?
Um, it depends.
Be one day a week consistently?
It encompasses all of the different types of special events that we normally see. It could be anything from a few hours on a given day to maybe it's a weekend, or maybe it's a week. Um, if it's a, if it's something that a business is doing, it could be reoccurring, not every single day of the week, but a weekend, for example.
Right.
Um, so it takes into account a variety, so, so the language will be flexible.
Right, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how you guys are gonna get around. If it's defined as a special event, then we need to and issue a permit, and permits are money, and they show intent. So I'm trying to define exactly the special event can be every Wednesday for three months? Or does it have to be every Wednesday?
So it, it, since we're talking about the zoning ordinance and it's on private property, um, let me use the Red Gales as an example. They, for the last couple of years, have come in at the beginning of the year when they get their outdoor seating permit.
Right.
And they ask for a permit to have a food truck on the weekends, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday. They don't have it every single weekend.
Right.
They don't always have it every, all three of those days.
Right.
But they hollow it out for the permit, and, excuse me, I should say, they secure the permit when they have the ability to, to, to bring, to secure a food truck to come out. The only thing that they have to do, and they're very good at it, is if the food truck hasn't been here before, and they don't have fire department.
Right.
They get that before they bring the truck out.
So they, they acknowledge that's what they're gonna do to show their intent, but they don't have to pull a permit until.
They do have a permit. And they.
I mean, they don't have to pull a permit until the, uh, the date comes up. Say about notifying them, doing every weekend in the summer.
If they're, if a Red Gales wanted to do it every.
Right.
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday through the summer, May first to October thirty-first, they could get a permit.
One permit.
One permit.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There, there was actually a, a lot of discussion around exactly that at the Planning Commission.
Really?
I actually was for the, yeah, for the discussion, yeah. So they, they had a lot of discussion about. So they they had a lot of discussion about specifically like.
What is temporary?
Exactly, what is, the exact same conversation, and it's good they could take some time and get.
Well, you just have to. Try to imagine whoever's. On the other side, it's gonna try to. Try every avenue available.
Right. We're gonna set the metrics and people will figure out how to get around.
That's fine.
Jim Cardy, who always says, he said it, I can't remember if you were still there. If we find a loophole, we'll fix it.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, it's almost impossible to cover every loophole.
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is item J five, City Manager Report, Mr. Brier.
Sure, uh, so just a couple of things, um. Uh, the mayor and I didn't be, uh, were able to set up a meeting with uh Shore North this afternoon. Um, and we did have an opportunity to meet with them. Um.
Remind me again who that is?
Uh, Shore North was the uh second interested party to submit a letter of interest for uh purchase of the, purchase of the Mav property.
Matter of view?
Yes.
A matter of view, yeah. Um, and so, you know, we we just walked through uh their letter of interest, um. Uh, substantially, everything that was in in their letter of interest is is. Still relevant, um, essentially, they're they're looking to go through uh the. Um, land entitlement process and and get planning commission approval, city approval on their site plan. Um, before closing. That that would be their their goal and intent. Um. And uh they're. Um, primarily a um rental, um. Res- residential rental developer, uh multifamily. Um, so we'll. You know, have a item for the next city council meeting to uh discuss what we want to do.
Well, I need one of your strategic planning documents we've been talking about.
It's in the DDA.
It 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 is in the DDA, um.
Yeah, they all need, so.
So um, there there'll be an item at the at the next city council meeting for that item. Um. We uh did make an offer to an associate planner, uh who did accept, um, that is uh. Um, David Jarvey. Uh, he comes to us from Manistee County. Um, the the plan is for him to start in November. Um, because he's gotta be, he's gotta move, so it's gonna, it's gonna take a little bit of time. Uh, we did have a, we did also make an offer, uh, and have a candidate accept for the Recreation Coordinator. Uh, so Casey Erwin accepted, and she started two weeks ago. Um, you may know her mother, uh, Kim Swoverland. Uh, from the Dexter Library. Or for former, formerly of the Dexter Library. Um, and then we are uh having our final, uh, first interviews for the Public Utility Operator uh position this week. Um, we may end up uh making uh two selections, depending on what a current member of staff decides or decides not to do. Um, as far as their um retirement. Um, we'll see. It, we 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 have a number of good applicants, so. If if. That. Current staff member is interested in retiring, then we may move forward with with two selections, so. Um, we have the November election upcoming, um, we have Saturday office hours on on November first. Um. And. Staff was contacted by an engineer working on behalf of the schools, uh, to start investigation on. Um, a portion of their bond project on property immediately adjacent to the Dexter High School. Um, that is gonna be a topic of conversation that we'll need to meet with schools about and insert those conversations, because it sounds like they want to extend. Uh, water and sewer outside of the existing four twenty five.
Shield road then?
Uh, off of.
Parker. Back where they cleared all their new stuff back then. Which I'm sure was their intent all the time, so. But depends on how much they need. Everything's relative.
Okay, um, are there uh any questions for the City Manager? Mr. Tell?
Um, can you give me an update on a meeting with Dan Whalen and? The Eagle letter, what was that referring to, except for the well?
That that that's, um, so. Uh, I I believe council is where we received feedback from Eagle on the um bigger land holdings, Sloan Kingsley, well.
Mm hmm.
Um. So we we met with Sam Whalen to get his initial take on uh what that, the meaning of the letter from Eagle.
Okay.
Um, and we're working to set up a meeting um with the bigger road land holdings team, our team, and the Eagle representatives to.
So we get a definitive understanding what needs to be done, so we could. Pull one around.
Yeah, so we're we're currently looking at the week of. October twenty seventh, but we don't have a a final selected.
At least it's in the pipe. How about the Gazoo Buran bid opening, you get any bids?
Uh, we did get two bids, um, and I believe the um. Uh, bid tab is included in in the packet.
Sorry, didn't.
That's, that's okay. Uh, the low bid was just about fifty one thousand.
And that's for the designs we submitted?
Correct. Yeah, so um, that'll be an item for for next city council meetings, um. I I was asked to to hold off on that until until the next one.
Well, yeah, I'm just, that's gonna be a large expenditure or something isn't budgeted, so. It just means.
Um, there 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 may be opportunity to use um Community Development Block Grant funding. Um, but that's gonna be a conversation with uh County CDBG.
Well, I think the. Estimate alone is eye opening, um.
It was eye opening for for me as well, I didn't, I I did not expect that number.
Well, either they don't wanna do it, or it's too hard for them to do it.
It 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 may also be the time of year, uh, time constraints. It's 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 hard to know.
Yeah, I'm just not willing to deal on their schedule. And I think that's, oh, can you get, what about the WCSO Contracting Partners Meeting, is that just another update of what's going on for Main Street, or?
Uh, not specifically for Main Street, no, um, that that that, that that's just a a recurring, um, I think it's every other month. Um, where the contracting partners get together and um talk about updates from the the Sheriff's. Office, staffing, deployment. Uh. That 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 sort of thing.
Well, I haven't seen any increased sheriff, so. But I'm, I'm not really out at all times either, so. How about you guys that drive the school, you ever see the sheriff?
Not otherwise. I have seen the sheriff, I don't know if it was the sheriff, but I've seen police cars by. Anchor and Beacon. More recently than I've ever seen them, um, and I know that. Before, like, this year, I've seen them at least three times. Last year, I think I saw them maybe once, so I think there's been.
Yeah, I I don't care if they're right tickets, I just want everybody to see them.
So so we we have been getting an increased number of um. Emails and and calls about the the traffic on Danaway. Around Anchor, Anchor Beacon, so the sheriff has been spending dedicated time.
We can assign, but I'm hoping for a little. Initiative from the other side at the same time. Well, maybe they load initiative. All right.
More so than I've seen in the last year, so.
They just have, people do. People wanna go the fastest, quickest way, and that's cutting through subdivisions. And that's fine if you wanna do twenty five, but. They ain't doing twenty five. All right.
All set?
Right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for the City Manager? Okay. Seeing none, the next item on the, excuse me, agenda is the Mayor's Report. Mayor Kio's report is in the packet. I cannot answer any questions on that, you'll have to contact the mayor. Look. Excuse me. Uh, J seven is the council member reports, is there any reports from any council members? Right, seeing none, item K on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion, please?
Move we approve of three consideration items on the consent agenda. One, bills and payroll in the amount of one million nine hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty one dollars and twenty nine cents. Two, request from the Dexter Chamber of. Commerce for the closure of Central Street from Main to Fifth for downtown Halloween event on October thirty first. Twenty twenty five, and three, sale of equipment via auction.
I'll support. Motion by Hubbard, second by Tell. Please call go.
Tell?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Summer Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Pop off?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Uh, there's no unfinished business. Uh, agenda item M one is discussion of golf carts on city streets. Um. Can you take us through this some? Just to get started.
Sure, so um, yeah, Michelle has spent a bit of time on on this item, um, I know City Council asked staff to. Uh, to take a look, um, I did, it sounded like council was um. Contacted by a member or members of the public on this. Um, staff spent a little bit of time going through the law and um. Are coming back with uh information on it. Michelle?
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
You again?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Tell.
Uh, Logan.
So. The best way to come at this is there's two different angles that a community can come at. Allowing a. To allowing golf carts to utilize public streets. Uh, I'll clear right off the bat. Sidewalks are not allowed, state statute says that. Uh, golf carts connect one sidewalks, if you have a non-motorized pathway. They cannot go on that pathway. So. The two areas are standard golf cart. The cutting that goes on golf. Course. The operator has to be at least sixteen and licensed, stop rate of motor vehicle. Has to comply with all signaling. Um. Must ride to the farthest right side of the road as uh possible. Um, it cannot operate uh a golf cart, standard golf cart, on a state highway, trunk line, et cetera. However, if they are permitted and they're on a road that. Is under um. Uh, it's twenty five miles an hour or under, then they can cross it. Uh, but they can't go any faster than that, and. We don't have to worry about that here, but that's the rules. So the golf cart itself, um, made by local ordinance, be required to uh use designated paths. Um, excuse me, if there's one adjacent to the street, but it's not a sidewalk. Uh, they can't pass lines of traffic, but they can obviously do turning movements, left hand turning, movement, right hand turning. Um, they must not operate on sidewalks that are specifically for pedestrians. Um. Uh, they have, they must be operated at speeds not to exceed fifteen miles an hour, and cannot, under any circumstances. Uh, uh, be on a street with a speed limit that's more than thirty miles an hour. They must not be operated during the time, a period of time that's a half hour before sunset, or a half hour after sunrise, or it's like, yeah.
Yep.
After sunrise. Um, and it's not, but they're not required to be licensed or insured by the state. That's the standard golf cart. If you were going to do that, you would pass a resolution being very specific to that. Um. In addition to those regulations, um. You have the ability, if you want to, to allow golf carts. To. Go the second round, which is to make them. Um, subject to low speed vehicle requirements, and that's what comes under item number three. So in a different, in uh, in addition to those regulations, it's already been identified, like, speed limits, not on sidewalks, et cetera. Excuse me. The city can require a golf cart to be registered within its jurisdiction. Can't require it, it's not required at state, but you can require it within your own jurisdiction. Um, and you may require that it meets certain safety standards, and those are the ones for low speed vehicles, as set forth at state. If you register vehicles. You're not supposed to charge your fee. But if you offer license plates or decals on them. You, or require them to be licensed or decal in your community, then you can charge for them. People get really creative, some communities get really creative with that.
Yeah.
So um, um, on a low speed vehicle, it's two headlights, and they have to comply with machine vehicle code, and that's what those linked sections are. There has to be at least one taillight that complies. Uh, one stoplight or stop lamp, um. And uh mechanical um. Signaling devices, the the light. At least one reflector on each side of the golf cart. Um, these are, and and I'm sure you've read them, so I won't continue on them, those are. Addled safety measures. Um. Which. In staff's opinion, makes a whole lot of sense, um. And it it's. It's it's interesting to me that. Um. That something was used to be always just a standard golf cart being. On a road. Um, um. But it. That's the beauty of this. So, um. We looked at Charlevoix, they don't allow operation of standard golf carts on streets, but they do require that they meet low speed vehicle requirements. You know. To be considered, I love their term in their website, street legal. So some of us that go back a number of years, remember cars being street legal for drag racing. You guys know. Uh, City of Bronson, they adopted an ordinance that allows the operation of golf carts in streets, and again, they also require the low speed. Richmond, um, a lot of standard golf courses are golf carts, but they don't allow them, um. Specifically. During bad weather events, like ice, snow, et cetera, and they do require, uh. If I remember, decals and registration. Albion, Owasso, and uh the Village of Cast City, they've all adopted for standard. Um, but only Owasso required the registration, North Muskegon came out. That they don't actively. Let people know what's going on, you can't find this on their website, Justin was able to get it through the City Managers. Um. Uh, listener.
Yeah, yeah, we we rarely get information correctly from the City Managers.
And they allow standard golf carts, registration, registration sticker, an inspection, and the fee. They were the creative ones, or one of the creative ones. They don't put the information on their websites, they intentionally don't promote it, it's word of mouth. And if I remember correctly, they got about sixty seven registered registered golf carts. They're a bigger community than we are, so. And then the City of St. John's did study. The golf cart issue, they even drafted an ordinance, and in the end, the planning commission. Did not want to have anything to do with it, and it never even went to their council, so it died away. Natural. Unfamiliar with that. Any questions you've got, I'm happy to answer them. The fire chief did send his suggestions, if he was going to. Um, allow them, it's not, obviously, as a safety professional, it's not something you would want to see. I'm providing you that information, they're speaking with him, but he also recognizes that this is a decision by council, and they've still just provided. Um, suggestive. Requirements, if you go there.
And and his uh, his thoughts are included in this episode.
Uh, comments, councilmember shot? Did any of the communities um require them to carry some kind of insurance?
Danny answers for him.
They don't have to. It's, I I remember, and I think it was an MML document, whatever, something in it. Or maybe it was one of the lawyer websites, somebody did recommend it, even though, um. The state doesn't require it.
Mm hmm.
Think about, think about it. If you're in the car and you caused an accident or are part of an accident. You don't have insurance. And that just seems like a whole lot of risk, of course, you would want to take that, and so. I would think you'd wanna do that.
Do you have anything else?
I do.
Okay, councilmember pop up.
With all the requirements. Theoretically, that need to be fulfilled. How much time do you expect the staff? Will need to dedicate just to. Will need to dedicate just to. This idea and um with a creative uh use of uh. Recuperating the costs. Uh, what do you think would be? Not to predict the number, but I guess I'm asking you to predict the number. What's the minimum number of? Golf carts do we need to uh allow on the streets to make it financially at least even? With the amount of hours and work it will take for staff to dedicate to this.
So that's a really good question, but it's not one I can answer. At this meeting, it would take some time to hold the information together, work with Justin to figure out. What that number would be. I I could, I wouldn't even venture against.
Yeah, so so I I would probably most closely compare this to our uh seal coat registration ordinance. Um, so in order to apply seal coat material in the city, you must register as a seal coat applicator. Um, there was quite a bit of time upfront to develop the application, develop the ordinance, develop the the rules and regulations. Um. You get the first round of applications, you you have to work through it. It it takes quite a bit of time to to review the applications. Um, but once you get a couple of years in. Then it really becomes sending out the note, the the notice to the community that, you know, this. Application is out there, you must complete this application in order to. Do the seal coat app- application. Um, but. The time investment goes down over time as people get used to it. Um. The the.
Hmm. We don't get a lot of new applicants.
Correct, yeah, a a lot of the applications that we get are like year-over-year commercial applicators. Um, that do this in in a number of other communities, and so they they understand the process and know what they need to provide. Um. How many people would actually li- likely apply for? The golf cart registration and want to meet the uh requirements thereof? That it it's hard, it's hard to be able to guess. Um, I I think that probably the most challenging thing is gonna be. Once word of mouth gets out that the city is allowing golf carts on 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 the city or on city streets. People are just gonna do it, not know that they need to fill out an application, and then. We gotta, then we gotta cha- chase them down.
I mean, uh, just to pull up on that, who exactly will be going, make sure that. They are compliant. I mean, Shaw, you're gonna drop under the. Going to make sure that it's a mechanical blinker, up to standard code?
So. If the city were to allow it, as as Justin has laid out. And um required them to. Have have whatever requirements. I would, I would. Anticipate that the registration would include some type of inspection. And whether that is something that's done by staff. BPW, we bring in, we work with the Washington County Sheriff. Um. Those are all. Options for dealing with that.
And and I mean, generally, when it comes to issues with motor vehicles, we tend to defer to the sheriff's office for those items. Um, you know, we we used to do parking enforcement in-house. And then they eliminated the ability for of us to be to uh be able to chalk. The state. Might even be at at federal level. Um, our ability to chalk tires was removed. And there, and our ability to actually enforce parking restrictions was kind of lopped off at the knee. Um, and so, again, that's something that we would then defer to the sheriff's office. Mo- motor vehicle enforcement is a tough thing to do.
I'll do the enforcement if you let me ride or drive the gator. I can work remotely from the front seat. Well, not while driving.
Any other date?
I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask, but is there support for this to go forward from all of us, council members or?
That that was gonna be, that was gonna be my, my question is.
I don't support this at all. So, just my one council member vote, and I don't know how the rest of you. Bicycles are enough for me.
I think if we're gonna, I mean. We need everybody here to go down that route, so. I think if we have any discussion on it, we, you know, that'd be good for now, if there's anybody here who. Does support it, but if not, we might wanna ask that question at the next meeting.
I didn't. Like I said, I didn't know.
Other comments or questions?
I, you know, I haven't had a chance to look at the. Fire chief's uh memo, so I'm gonna do that before I weigh in on anything.
Uh, I was going to uh ask. Uh, do you other student reps have any comments or anything? Go ahead.
Um, I did say this once before that I'm very anti-golf carts. I think it's honestly like the most dangerous thing that we could put on our streets. Especially given that golf carts have no like safety. Like thing on it, which is what the. Fire department chief talks about. Um, and I know drivers in Dexter are. Not very good, to be honest.
They're just in a hurry.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at, is one. We will have traffic problems, which are already horrible. And I just think it will get worse, and I think we will see a huge increase in. Crashes and incidents, and I just really do not wanna see that at all, especially given the fact that. There's, I've never seen a golf cart with a seatbelt on it, and if there is a crash. Uh, that is just not good. Um, even if there is a seatbelt on it, there's no doors, there's no windows, and I can only think of how. Horrific that can be if it's a bad incident, so.
Good point.
I just. I do not agree with allowing golf carts on our streets.
Any other comments?
I think my main question is why, especially if there's only a few select streets that the golf carts can go. Why not walk or bike or scooter or any other mode of transportation? Honestly, you could probably go just as fast that way. So I just, if it's not something that. Hundreds of people want, I just wouldn't really see the point.
Thank you. Um. Go ahead.
I just wanna say something to that. I think that. What this primarily enhances mobility for people who can't do those things. So, and I'm, that that's just facts, but I'm not, that's not opinion, I'm not.
That's what I'm telling.
It really come down to benefit versus detriment. How many people, is, are we gonna benefit overall? Or is it gonna be a detriment by enforcement? Uh, nobody paying attention. I can't even imagine how many golf carts are gonna be uptown. During like uh Dexter days or something.
Friday nights.
Yeah, and then you gotta park all these jokers and. There is no parking for it. I just believe it's gonna be a huge enforcement problem. Especially, there's two times of the day, we all know that's bad for traffic. And I I how am I to say that you can't ride your golf cart to the industrial park? For your shift, or how come I can't drive it to the high school? I'm sixteen, I'm going to my senior class. And.
Cause they can't go over dirty?
Because of the sheer traffic and people not really looking, it's a low, it's a low. Vehicle, it's not really very visible, but I I find it amusing that. You can do it as long as they have their own dedicated path. You can't do them on sidewalks, you can't do them on bike lanes. You can't, I don't even know, maybe, I don't even know if you can do it on the border-to-border trail. I don't think so. So. You could try to get it just doing the side streets. But I I don't, I don't see a real, I mean, other than a few people that are physically incapable. Getting around, I could see that, you know, because people would respect one or two. I'm not sure they're gonna respect twenty, or there's a drag, somebody's trying to make a left. People, they they just don't care, they're in a hurry. Someone's gonna get smeared, and we're gonna get sued. The traffic coming through this town is just. Unbelievable. You know the last car counts we had coming through here?
Oh, yeah.
Was it thirty, forty thousand today, twenty thou, I can't even remember.
I think it's fifteen thousand over the bridge, but I don't know what the.
Right, and is that one time a day or is that both times?
That was during the.
So, and that's gotta have increased a little bit, with the reduced police presence that I'm witnessing, even though they are doing better. I hate to throw something else on their plate. Because I don't know who's gonna enforce it. We, as a city, I don't believe. We could enforce it, but then we get into tickets and court and blah, and on and on, and lawyers and forever and ever. When it could be totally avoided. I don't think it's golf carts, just. Go golfing. Or else dedicate. Talked it or transported, say we need dedicated golf carts. It's not gonna, they're not gonna share.
Okay. Um, Miss Andrew, I had a couple of questions.
Same.
Well, can you put some context around the request and what the, what the re? What, what the? Context.
So, the request that came. To me was uh from um a parent who was interested in being able to um. Take their child to school.
Hmm.
And um. Um. If memory serves me correctly, we talked about how it can't be on a road more than thirty-five miles an hour. Um. And the schools should be taking those children to our angry weekend. And instead of. Wouldn't be able to.
Get there.
Get there. And he said, well, you're going on a sidewalk, you're going on a sidewalk. And he said, but it's twenty-five miles an hour in school. Well, that's true, but between the point you leave your subdivision. And get to that twenty-five mile an hour space is a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, and you couldn't be on the road. Oh, details, if I remember right, so. I can't imagine, um. With the traffic that's on the airport. That, um, people, if if golf carts were going to be allowed, whether they're the low-speed. Uh, vehicle or the standard. When it gets backed up. They may have the. They're gonna have a better opportunity of getting off the road, getting out of the sidewalk. And wasn't through to get through.
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen.
Pop offs and pickups, so.
And would. Would this apply to other off-road vehicle type of vehicles if they had the right lighting and stuff on them or strictly, I mean?
I haven't done that research, but that's a really good question, because we have, um, we have all kinds of electric bikes.
Four-by-fours.
Little four-by-four. Um, off-road vehicle standards, that don't mean that they're. But. I don't think it's hurt to look at those. What those state rules and regulations are, as well as the machine vehicle code, to provide guidance to the community.
Okay. I, I just a couple of other comments. I think we probably would need feedback from sheriff as well. Just to see, like we were talking about, I mean, I have to believe if it's somebody that's on the road, the sheriff's gonna be. Dealing with it, one should form another. Um, and to the point about the uh. The speeds, uh, when I worked at Ford, we used to. This, the crash testing was done at fifteen miles an hour was the lowest, and. I mean, granted, you're taking a, our, a buck and running it into a. Non-moving wall, right? It's it's, it's not like running into another vehicle, but. You total the vehicle, fifteen miles an hour is enough to, and that's with. As point made, that's with.
A cage.
Energy absorbing design and airbags and all the other stuff, so, so yeah, it is a, it's a good point, so. Um. Okay, uh, any other comments before we close out? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, my concern would also be the liability. What kind of liability does the city think on by pressing this ordinance would be? Ray mentioned we would be sued. Um, what, what cost of insurance would that be to our insurance policy? Like, there is all the original cost factors and risk factor.
Yeah, good point. Okay. All right, there's no other comments? We'll close that out. Um. You're good on that?
So, um, it sounds like, br- bring this back. For next meeting to determine whether or not we wanna do anything with that.
Need for a quick follow-up.
Quick, quick follow-up.
Yeah, and if possible, with some sort of feedback from the sheriff, I would say, just so we cover all our bases.
Yeah.
And if that could be in the packet, that would be great, so that I could take a look at. I just usually can't get to the supplement.
I agree that we should uh look at what the state says about electric bikes. ORVs, see if that's even allowed. Certain dirt bikes can't even ride on, um. It's all about lighting and safety, you know. Well, they wanna be able to come around, but. And it's a revenue stream.
Okay. Good enough. Excellent. Uh, that wraps up new business. Item N on the agenda is non-arranged participation. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to speak at this time. Please come forward and give your name and address, and let me, your comments do five minutes or less. No? Okay. Any online? Doesn't look like it. Anyone online wanna comment? Please raise your hand, okay. Doesn't look like it, okay. Uh, council comments, we'll start out with Mr. Trinko.
Um, nothing from me.
Okay, Ms. Martina.
Nothing from me either.
Great, thank you, Mr. Popov.
Um, no, sir, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Hubbard.
I'm gonna say something, but Beth, do not put this in the minutes.
You can say it afterwards.
Okay, it has to do with me driving a golf cart on ten acres of property at a wedding, escorting people up and down.
But.
Hills, weeks ago. And it was a six-person golf cart, which had six seatbelts.
Yeah.
But it was scary. For the people.
This is tell.
Uh, I wanna thank our two student reps for speaking up. Feel free to do more of that.
Thank you, Mr. Schloss.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I had one question. Um, I actually talked to uh. One of our downtown uh business owners, and um he expressed concern about. The impact that having Main Street closed down next year will have for the businesses. I don't know if there's anything that we can potentially do for the business owners there. I have no idea. Open any suggestions, ideas, whatever.
Um, I can tell you we cannot just give cards.
No.
That's okay. That is a no-no.
Yep.
Um, my, I I I was giving some contemplation to timing of the closure. Um, that that we might, that we might have some flexibility with. Um. I mean, the 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 roundabout is. Will 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 cause a several-month-long closure.
Yeah.
Um, our portion of the the resurfacing of Main Street is gonna be significantly quicker. Um, but whether that happens, you know, in our normal, when school is out time, you know, uh, mid-June to, you know, end of August. Or do we shift it back and make it more of a fall closure? I mean, it's not really gonna be impacting school traffic all that much. So.
Okay.
Can I have a question?
Yes, please.
How long is our closure gonna last?
Uh, I would guess probably six to. Six to eight weeks.
After that six to eight weeks, though, Alpine opens up, Jemmy's opens up, so even though we have. The roundabout closure, it's not gonna be easy, but we're gonna have passage, you know.
With, wi- 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 within downtown.
Within downtown after that six to eight weeks.
How long was? Was the road closed when the bridge failed? I mean, that, I mean, you you just got you, you had no choice.
Right, yeah, the the concern of the, I mean, every time we have something like that happen, it's a, it's a big hit to the business. Yeah.
And 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 that was kind of the intent of doing the Main Street resurfacing. At the same time as the roundabout, so we're not, not double hitting.
That's exactly what I told you.
Still a really good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Option, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh. Is there a motion to adjourn, please?
Make that motion.
Motion by Slav, second by Popov. All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Aye. We are adjourned.